Welcome to the four o'clock work session of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for October 16th, 2012. We have a couple items on today's agenda for discussion. Mr. De Febo, I think the Language Access Plan is number one.
Thank you, Mayor. In this past January 2012, the city hired Leda Becker to be our first international community liaison. After her hire, we put together a formalized work program for her. And part of that work program involved the development of a comprehensive language access plan to help not only her do her job better, but also to have our city employees be more effective in dealing with the international community in our city. Leda is here today to present the plan. Brent Childers is going to preamble her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. As most of you know, this position was originally in the Police Department and primarily served a police function for a number of years under the direction of Monica Woods. Upon Monica's departure from the city, it was then expanded to NCS and then expanded across to the entire city. That's when Leda came onboard in January and started work for providing language access across the entire city. Historically, we had three language access plans, mainly driven by federal funds. I had one in Section Eight, also had one for our transit program, and then the Police Department had one tied to their JAG funding, the Justice Assistance Grant. This is the first time that the city will have one for all city services. As we all know, the city has grown more diverse. A couple weeks ago, I presented you with a presentation that talked about that. Last week, some of you got to see that firsthand at the International Communities Advisory Council meeting. You got to see what that diversity looks like, see the needs of the community. So we're just here to show what Leda's done, to show the Language Access Plan. We started staff training. That started back in the spring with the NCS department and then has rolled across the other departments. I think we're pretty well complete with the training portion. Some of that will change with the implementation of the new phone system, but at this point, we feel confident in that our frontline staff is trained to handle people with language issues or people that we don't communicate effectively well through English. And Leda will provide some more detail on that. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, and if there are none, I'll turn it over to Leda. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Okay, this is exciting. As many of you know, I came here to this region from the country of Venezuela when I was 13 years old. And not only did my whole world change from one night to the other, but the ability to be able to communicate with other individuals around me changed as well. And that impressed upon me to work on this in my position because I know how it feels like when there is a communication barrier. So we know, as Brent mentioned, that there is, we have such a diverse population. The numbers from the census indicate that we have about an almost 11 percent of our population is of foreign-born descent. But that means that from children ages five and over, about 13 percent of our population speaks another language other than English at home. The majority of those residents are of Hispanic or Latino descent, so Spanish is going to be the most prominent language. So this Language Access Plan is simply a management tool for our city staff to break down that communication barrier and be able to create greater access and participation by our residents and citizens to public services and programs that the city offers. So why is this important in the first place? Many of you may be wondering why would I get asked day in and day out, why do people who choose to live in our community not learn English in the first place? And the answer is rather simple. People are trying to learn English. As it was my experience when I came here, it's not something that happens overnight. Statistically, we know that on average, it takes about one to two years for somebody to learn English on a social level. But before going to that, we're going to focus on who is this population that we're trying to create greater accessibility? We call individuals who need that access LEP. And LEP stands for Limited English Proficiency. And it's not just the ability to be able to understand English, it goes beyond understanding a language. If you think about it, the fact that you know English is just not just beyond the ability to speak. You have to be able to write, read, and understand English effectively. So when people tell me oftentimes, "Do you speak Spanish?" And they say, "Un poquito," that means that they only know a little bit of Spanish. They may not be able to read or write or understand effectively to communicate in most social situations. And as I said, people are trying to learn. So statistically, we know that it takes about one to two years to learn English on a social level. That's the kind of lunchroom, classroom conversation that you may have with an individual. Hello, how are you? How is your family? Now, beyond that, when you're talking about more technical terminology, academic language, it takes, on average, five to 10 years for an individual to learn a second language. And so if we're thinking about the refugees and immigrants in our community who are eager to learn English, who are enrolled in classes, ESL classes, English learning training classes, but may not be there yet because it's gonna, there's gonna be a learning curve, we have to be able to provide accessibility. And the Language Access Plan is the most cost-effective resource and tool that we can use as a city to be able to provide that accessibility. So in creating the Language Access Plan, there were, there were a couple things to consider. We do have a legal obligation under the law, under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And if you're familiar with this law, the one part of the title that I want to focus on is national origin. Our language is tied to our national origin. We speak, you speak English as your primary language because you were born in the United States. I speak Spanish as my primary language because I was born in Venezuela. And so that's tied to my national origin and your national origin. Someone who is prevented from participating in a program based on their ability to communicate in their language could face discrimination. And that's something that we want, we have a priority in creating accessibility. So if we are a city that receives federal financial funding, maybe not in every department, but as a whole, we still have that obligation to provide accessibility, not deny services or provide it differently, or segregate or treat individuals differently in the provision of our service. Any questions so far? I see. Okay.
I'm listening.
Okay. Excellent.
This is my listening face.
Okay, your listening face. So having said that, the Language Access Plan takes into consideration and analysis. So when I first came into the position, I looked at a city as a whole, and as Brent mentioned, looked at what was already in place, and conducted this four-factor analysis based on these four things. The number and proportion of individuals who are limited English proficient in our community. So why does this matter? Because if we don't have a greater proportion of individuals who are LEP, then this plan wouldn't be, there would be no need for this plan. However, we do. That's the fact that we have over 10 percent of our population who is potentially LEP. The frequency of contacts. How often do individuals in our community who are limited access city services? Well, the frequency in contact is greater at the Police Department, and that's for obvious reasons. There was already a plan in place, there was outreach into the community, and so the frequency of contacts increased. All other departments, we don't know that because we're not tracking that information. However, with positions like mine, going out into the community and talking, establishing relationships, we can, we know that the frequency of contacts is potentially going to increase. We also looked at the nature and importance of the program or activity. How crucial is it that individuals have access to city services? Well, some programs are of more crucial nature than others, such as emergency services. We have to ensure that all residents in our community have that accessibility because that could be a life or death difference. However, there are other services that we provide that, while important, may not be as crucial that an individual has access at the, at the very second. Does that make, does that make sense? And then lastly, what resources do we already have in place to be able to provide language access? So having conducted that analysis, created a Language Access Plan. And you guys have the Language Access Plan with you as well, if you want to take a look at that. But it's based on seven different components. So as I said, this is simply a management tool. This is a list of procedures, steps, that city staff can take to provide accessibility. The first part of the plan has to deal with identification. How is the city staff able to identify the language of a person who is LEP? It would be really easy if we only had two languages here spoken in Bowling Green, such as Spanish, Bosnian, or English. However, according to our records, there are over 50-something languages spoken in our public school systems. And so it's not as easy as just listing languages one by one. We have to have tools in place in order to do that. And that's where the iSpeak card comes into place. If you notice attached, you will see a sample of the iSpeak card that we're utilizing. And it's simply a brochure. A brochure that lists the most common languages spoken here in Kentucky, by residents in Kentucky. And so what city staff can do is basically show the LEP individual, the brochure, and have them point to the language that they speak, assuming that this individual is able to read and write. They will be able to point to the adequate language, and the staff person can now identify the language and get appropriate interpreters. We also are in the process of creating a Language Access Card, which you also have attached. These are, this is the design, it has not been completed yet. This is actually a card that will be given to immigrants and refugees themselves, and they can self-identify their language. So when they come to a city department and they're seeking a services, all they have to do is present the card, and the city staff will know because it will have the information in English and in their language, and that way they can identify the language of that individual that needs assistance. So that's the first component. The second component is actually how to provide that language access. And that's in two ways, oral interpretation and written interpretation. We're going to focus the majority of the plan on utilizing a system that's over-the-phone interpretation. Many of you may be familiar with this system. It is through a company called In Every Language. And what the city staff will do is access this 1-800 number, once they've identified the language, and get an interpreter and, and have, provide services as usual. It is very cost-effective to utilize this. It's only $1.50 per minute for any language. So once they have done that, and if you notice in the plan, the only difference right now is that the staff person has to pay attention to what phone system they have in order to utilize the plan effectively. Once we change over with the phone system, the plan will also have to change as well. The plan takes into consideration face-to-face interpretation and translation. The advantage is that for any Spanish interpretation or translation, for the most part, city staff person have been instructed to reach me, and I will be able to do that, and I won't charge an additional $1.50 per minute. So that, that's an advantage of that. The third part will be translation of vital documents. It is crucial. I mean, if you think about all of the written documentation that we provide department by department, forms, instructions, legal documents, all of these documents that are written in English that we provide people in order to access services, if they are not available in other languages, then we're not given the same kind of access. And so we will be working at translating vital documents. That does not mean every single document is available in English. It means that we will prioritize the most vital documents per department, and we will translate them according to the languages that are most used in our community. We also want to provide notice. We want people to understand that we're going to provide language access when they walk into one of our departments. Notices will indicate that they have a right to an interpreter. And the training that Brent mentioned, it's crucial that staff know how to utilize this plan and that they feel comfortable and that this plan is meeting the needs of the public. And so we will be conducting the training that we have, and we've had really great response across all the departments, and I have really seen a need for something like this. Just across all the departments, city staff saying, "Thank you that we have tools in place now that we can utilize in providing services when we have communication barriers." We will also monitor the plan for effectiveness. And lastly, we will do outreach because it's important that our international community knows that our city is being proactive in integrating and creating accessibility. And our hope is that by utilizing this uniform plan across all city departments, that we can really create greater access to our international community. So that you, you may have a 13-year-old girl like me coming into this community, not knowing any English, but fast forward 19 years later, and you can have a productive member of your community who is ready to give back and who is ready to give to your community. So that is my hope for this. If you have any questions or comments?
Great question. Okay. Do you have?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You, at the very beginning, talked about that most people are wanting to learn English.
Yes.
That it takes a process, one to two or up to 10 years, depending on the type of English they're trying to learn in their setting. Where do individuals do that in the city of Bowling Green?
That's a really good question. Right now, individuals have access to language, English learning training classes through a couple of organizations. The International Center provides training. Also, the Alive Center provides, we have actually, and Brent can actually speak to this. Yes?
The city's supporting the Alive Center through a GED and ESL training through its CWG program, and that's mainly focused on the Spanish population, or the Spanish-speaking population. And they've had full classes all semester, and it's kind of a phase one in the fall and a phase two in the spring. And then Leda can talk about any other opportunities out there.
And also, the Bowling Green Technical College offers, and all of these classes are free of cost.
And are those classes based upon the social or the educational language?
They're, no, they're just, you know, based on, on their willingness. The International Center, though, I'm not really quite sure what you mean by that.
What I mean by that is, is it directed more at a person's ability to communicate in social settings or to communicate in an academic sense? Or is there a difference?
There is a difference. They have beginner and intermediate and advanced-level classes at all of the, all of the programs that they offer. And so with the International Center, this focus on refugees who have been recently resettled into our community, and so the classes that they receive are very basic.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Leda. We really appreciate knowing where you're going with this when we, when, I think Commissioner Waltrip was the one that was, tried to spearhead this, this effort to bring you onboard. We didn't really know what to expect, and now we see that the plans are being set forth, and it's exciting to see what's coming, coming next. Yes, sir?
Can you explain a little bit about la nuestra?
La nuestra?
Yes, please.
We also have a collaborative initiative through a radio, through, with WKCT radio station for a Spanish radio program that airs every Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00. And so I host a weekly segment on that program on city services and community resources. I interview different people from our community in Spanish, completely in Spanish, and it's really bridged a gap in, in need that wasn't existing because we didn't have a mass medium of communication to reach out to that large community, and now we do. And from the beginning, the show aired for the first time in May, and then in July, we co-sponsored sort of like a live broadcast at Preston Miller Park, and we had over 200 individuals in attendance who, who came from the Latino-Hispanic community to see the live broadcast. So it's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I said, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. De Febo.
No, that's, I think we should all be very proud of our initiative to reach out to all parts of our community, something that other communities haven't done, and I think we're on the cutting edge of that, that effort, at least statewide, anyway.
Next item on our agenda is for our critter capture program.
A number of commissioners and citizens have approached staff about the need for us to advance a more aggressive wild animal policy and initiative in the community. We took that request seriously. We, we have met as staff a number of times and involved those commissioners who have given us issues to discuss our approach. We've put together a policy for you all to look at today. Can you hear me okay? We put together a policy and an approach that we wanted to share with you, and in a future commission meeting, approve a policy for you all to have as something we can offer to citizens. I think Karen Foley is going to lead this, and I'll...
Stretch it out. She's still waiting for it to come up on the computer.
Karen Foley is, is going to be presenting on behalf of staff, myself, Brent, maybe some of the commission will also assist us in this. You should also know that we also provide services, tell me when you're ready, Karen, to the public for wild birds. Something we renewed about, about four years ago. We have a contract to handle the blackbirds, which seem to come at this time of year to keep a number of people away and create a nuisance. But this is designed primarily to deal with what is known as wild animals, and that is a form of our definition itself. So Karen is going to lead, and I'm going to be her second, as well as Brent and others.
I think she's ready.
Okay.
Very good.
I'm going to move this just so I can reach all of the doodads.
Now, you want to talk about the new, the new form you're using?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying something new that my third and fifth graders taught me how to use, and this is the first one of these I've created. So if it's a bust, it's a bust. But I figure, you know, if my McNeil Elementary School kids can use it, then maybe I can attempt it. We are going to go over our nuisance wildlife policy, and this is a little bit different format, but I'm covering basically the same information that's in written form that you all got in your packet. Roxy Ross is one of our animal control officers. She's here today, and I'm sure she's happy to answer any questions that you may have. But we thought it might be a good idea for us to go back and look at the different policies and procedures and practices that animal control has in place. Our animal control officers are primarily trained in pets, domesticated animals, cats, dogs, ferrets, those sorts of animals that might be pets. And so their expertise is not in wildlife. However, we do have resources that we, that we count on. And basically, what our policy does is it sets up our animal control officers to be kind of the frontline person to assess a complaint that might come in. A key point that we want people to know is just because you see birds or wildlife does not mean they are a problem or a nuisance. They are a part of our, our natural environment here in the city, every bit as much as what now our built-in structure, built infrastructure is and our residents are. Everyone, I'm sure, has seen the white squirrels around campus. Those are part of our natural environment. It's what we come to expect in the places where we live. So first and foremost, we want to make sure that people understand birds and wildlife are not necessarily a problem. And then to set up some parameters for if they do at some point become a nuisance, what we do with those. Keep going. Bill's not with us today, but he is one of the two animal control officers we have. Obviously, they are not working 24/7, but they do have shifts, and they try to have as much coverage during the time that the two of them working full-time can account for. When they are not on duty, however, the Police Department does take the role of public safety, just like any other public safety emergencies that may arise, very seriously. And so you may have noticed here in the last number of years, for example, they responded to a deer that ran into a hotel and was causing a ruckus. Anytime a creature of wildlife, a wild creature, becomes in close proximity in humans and possibly could hurt people, obviously, the Police Department, regardless of where their Bill and Roxy are on duty at the time, they are going to respond to that. As Chief Hawkins told me on the phone the other day, "We are in the business of taking care of problems." So if there's a problem and Bill and Roxy aren't there, they will send a police officer, and they will go from there trying to figure out what's going on. Now, there are all kinds of ways that Bill and Roxy can learn about different wildlife or bird problems. Sometimes people will call them directly, and this is the, the non-emergency number for Bill and Roxy at 393-4110. Sometimes they may call Police Dispatch. As you know, Police Dispatch operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They may also call me or Bobby Joe at the City Central Call Center. They may do that during the week. They may approach me at a neighborhood meeting. So there's a lot of different ways. They can also reach us online. We have a, an online request form now, and we do get some requests on that form regarding animal issues, including wildlife. So we do forward those to Bill and Roxy.
We need a dot.
I know, I missed a dot. So we do have a plan for how to manage these. This language right here basically pulls in some information that Bill and Roxy have been operating on as animal control officers. This is to protect them, to keep them safe as they go about their work. So they're not going into people's attics, they're not crawling under people's houses after critters. They're not doing that. And we thought it was important to mention that in this policy. And also, I mean, there are also animals that we don't necessarily consider wildlife. We consider them more pests, rodents, bats. Not that bats are bad, bats have a purpose, but there are certain animals that we're just, we're not taking any complaints about those because it's assumed, of course, you're going to have squirrels in your yard. Of course, there may be rabbits. Of course, there are some sort, there's hummingbirds, there's birds. Of course, those things are here, and we're not going to consider them a problem. So we did want to list some of those. We also wanted to mention, we do have Chapter Five of the Code of Ordances that deals with animals, and we did want to mention that there are some things that talk about exotic animals and/or reptiles, and we basically want to place it in Bill and Roxy's authority to be able to make judgment calls about exactly how to handle those. We didn't want to rule out the possibility, we did have a discussion about chupacabra and crazy mythical creatures, but we didn't want to exclude the possibility that someone brings an exotic animal from somewhere that then creates a public nuisance. Is it likely to happen? Probably not, but I'm sure you all have read in the news, you know, someone was keeping zoo animals, and they let the zoo animals loose. You just never know what could happen, and so we didn't want to exclude those. And we feel like those, case by cases, are covered under that Chapter Five. Bill and Roxy are going to use a couple of sets of things as they evaluate incidents that are reported to them. Obviously, the level or degree of danger to public health and safety, the level or degree of danger to air or watercraft, and the level or degree of danger to public infrastructure. A couple of examples here, for example, the airport actually contracts with the USDA to do some bird abatement, and that is to protect the aircraft that are flying in and out of the airport. So that's one example. Another example, as far as public infrastructure, I know in the past, we've had a couple of incidents where we've had beavers building dams, I think at the landfill sites and some other places, and that starts to jeopardize public infrastructure, landfill, the caps, those sorts of things. So we want to make sure that, that they are able to pull the trigger on in getting some abatement when needed to protect those sorts of things. The other set of impacts that they're going to consider are things... The USDA has a wildlife biologist on staff, the state, just drawing a blank, Fish and Wildlife, they also have wildlife biologies, biologist on staff. So they will consult as needed. They're also going to consider the effectiveness of solution and how much that may cost. Here would be an example, someone called to complain about an area and it was really part of a covered storm drain. And there'd been quite a bit of drought, not a whole lot of water running through the storm drain, but they noticed that skunks seemed to be camped out in the storm drain. Well, the storm drain was covered for a lot of distance. And there wasn't a good place where even if you wanted to trap skunks, that you could trap skunks. So sometimes we recognize there's not going to be an effective solution that we can even try. So we're just acknowledging that upfront, that sometimes there'll just be things that it's nature and there's not a lot we can do about it. Basically, this just reiterates that, you know, animal control officers are going to respond to the, any kind of animal incidents that present immediate danger. And they're the ones that we are basically saying, "You are the city's representative in determining if there's a threat. And if so, what we should do about it going forward," balancing those things out. So they might do this either through just talking with the complaint on the phone, they may do it by making a site visit, they may do it with consulting with our wildlife professionals. These four things are basically the tools that animal control has in their toolbox related to nuisance wildlife. They can assess the situation, they can try to pass along any kind of education, public information materials about certain species to people who have questions. Because people may not realize certain animals are not a danger to them, except in certain circumstances. And they will also be working with me as needed, if we need to, to let other neighbors in an area know what the particular issue is and what they might be able to do to discourage certain kinds of animal behaviors. Obviously, any kind of food that feeds, feeds a pet, if you're leaving that outside, well, guess what? You're not just going to be feeding your pet, you're going to be feeding possums and raccoons and all sorts of other things, too. So sometimes a little bit of public awareness in a neighborhood can help. And they're also going to be tracking those sorts of complaints so that they know where we expect to see coyotes. They're going to know where we expect to see skunks. Hopefully, they'll be able to pinpoint if there's a flare-up in population in a certain area and determine whether that's something that we should get involved in. They're also able to provide some advice and referral. Because a lot of times, people call the city because they don't know who else to call. And they see us as a source of information and we want to be able to, to refer them to some contractors. Because sometimes you think it would be easy just to find something in the phone book or to look in the Yellow Pages, that's not always the case. So hopefully, they'll be able to provide that service to people in situations where the impacts are really negligible, negligible, or it's not really to the level of a public nuisance, those sorts of things. So that the person has some, some, they've received some kind of service from us. They're not just left hanging on their own. And then finally, contracted abatement. Basically, our animal control officers are not in the business of trapping skunks themselves or seeking to trap coyotes themselves. As I mentioned earlier, they are trained in domesticated animals, pets, and that's, that's their expertise. For any of these other sorts of things, we will contract with a wildlife professional. Someone mentioned like Turtle Man. Yes, exactly like Turtle Man, but not Turtle Man, a different Turtle Man, here locally. I hear Roxy laughing. We will leave that to them. I don't know if you all realize, the day of the bicentennial open house, one of our wildlife professionals was in the building earlier the afternoon and he had actually been sprayed by a skunk. And I, I'm hoping that all that lingering odor went away prior to our guest arriving. But that's one of the reasons why we don't want our animal control officers out there trapping skunks and critters. We would rather leave that to other professionals who make their living that way. I just wanted to reference this, some of the definitions from Chapter Five. There are definitions in that chapter related to animal, domestic animal, exotic or wild animal, and a vicious or dangerous animal. I thought it might be helpful to have that included with the nuisance wildlife policy, just for reference. And then lastly, our plan is to, once this policy is in place, assuming you have no changes, that we would put this information, of course, on our website so people can access it. Obviously, twenty-four hours a day, if people have a particular wildlife issue or animal issue, they can call three nine three four thousand. Of course, they can call us at the call center at three nine three three four 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 during the week. And if they just have a question for Bill and Roxy and they just want to leave a message and they're like, "Hey, you know, what do I do about snakes in the yard?" You know, any kind of a question like that where they just really want to call back or perhaps they're having an ongoing issue with an animal on the block and they just need some advice, they can call the three nine three four one one zero. And Bill and Roxy are good to call them back. And of course, Roxy's here. I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So just to reiterate, we're emphasizing the fact that we have wild animal abatement choices and we're going to help take care of that. However, this is not substitute for their own family member or homeowner's pest control.
That's right. And one of the things also that is in the policy is, you know, if, if a critter makes it into your home, it's in your home. And it's, it, once it's inside your house, it's really your obligation to figure out what to do with it, once it's in your house. And, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It might be good to elucidate how we drew the line between private burden and community burden. That was a long discussion we had many times about what is considered person's property and what isn't.
That's right. And one of the, one of the considerations that we had was if an animal has made it into one of the places, as we mentioned, where Bill and Roxy are not going. If it, if it's trapped in your house, for example, it's trapped in your attic, as far as, as far as we're concerned, that's a private burden on, on the property owner to try to figure out a way to handle that. Now, I'm sure if they call and need advice, I don't know who to call, I'm sure that we would be happy to say, "Well, you know, most pest control companies, you know, make a referral in that way." If an animal is on the property and it's outside and it's a, it's a family of skunks, it's taken up residence, you know, behind a shed and it's hanging out at your house during the day and it's maybe hanging out at somebody else's house at night, maybe they're having a block party down the road periodically, that is potentially a neighborhood issue that potentially we could be involved in. And that was kind of, that was the thinking that we had is, you know, if an animal is still in the backyard and it has access to go other places. And if it is causing a nuisance in one place, it's potentially causing a nuisance in other places.
And that is the issue that really sparked this issue to be brought back up because, again, there were some residents in the neighborhood that were trying to bear the cost of all of the skunks in the neighborhood because they were just the ones who called. So I'm pleased with, with how you all have, have worked on this policy. And I think it will be a real asset to, to people in the community to have these issues that are more of a neighborhood issue versus an individual issue.
And we're hoping, too, that by neighbors sharing that information with us, will have a better understanding of exactly those sorts of things. You know, is this, and do we have a skunk problem in this entire subdivision here? Is there anything that we can do about that? Versus, if you have individuals that are all calling potentially private contractors, we don't know that that's going on. So there's not really a good way for us to, to help in that way. So, yes, I would agree with that.
We look at this kind of as a renewed commitment by the city to help, help residents. It's kind of a transitional year because we, in our budget, we only have about ten thousand dollars. It seems like a lot of money, but not if you have to hire a trapping professional. So we'll be looking at it in the coming year to see if that's sufficient or not. But we think it will be, but we don't know what our demand will be. Do you want to hear from Roxy at all about any questions? She could tell you what life's like out in the field.
Oh, I think Roxy should be able to say something.
I'm very, I'm very happy with this. And just this past Friday, Bill and I both used the wildlife trapper. I used him over behind the Toys R' Us for a deer that the adjoining Ashton Apartments thought was trapped down inside of a culvert that was, also had a fence around it. And so Ronnie came out and he went down in it with his dart gun to ruffle him up. The deer went up to the side of the fence, looked at the fence, went boop. So he was not trapped. And the people at Ashton was very happy to know that the deer could get in and out. And then Bill had him over on the same day on West Fourteenth at a house.
Not the deer, Ronnie.
I'm sorry.
Not the deer, Ronnie.
No. This one was on a coyote. Coyote was underneath a deck. And so Ronnie came over and was able to secure the coyote. So we're really happy with the way this is turning out and we believe that the wildlife trapper will benefit the community.
If I could just summarize for the public, the system we set up is designed, first of all, to allow our, our staff to triage, to make a determination whether it, the city shares in the responsibility to try to remove the animals. Then after that determination is made through a call through the staff, then that triggers whether or not it's a private responsibility. For example, if you have squirrels in your attic, that would be a private responsibility. Or if you have chipmunks in your basement. Then from there, they would call the wildlife professional and execute the demand for services from him and hopefully have the, the wildlife removed. We think it's a part of, like, the contract we have with our citizens to provide this kind of service in an urban environment. Out in the country, this is everyday life of having a skunk in your backyard. But here, I think that the level and demand for service was a little higher, so that's why we developed this policy.
Any questions or comments?
Just one, if I may. Can we announce for the public the hours that Bill and Roxy work?
We're probably going to do a whole workup on, on the website, like a whole page. Yeah, but we could, we could do that. Announce this policy as a runner, like, on our website. And put, made a hyperlink. Lynn, you're here, right? We could do that. But yes. And we're going to communicate with the dispatchers, make sure there's clarity there about this policy. Is that right, Karen? With the dispatcher, we're going to have clarity with that. But yes.
Very good. I think we're done. Anyone else?
All right, sir. That's the last item for, that we have on our agenda unless somebody from the Board of Commissioners has a policy initiative they'd like to bring forward. Hearing none, we'll recess until our seven o'clock regular meeting. Thanks for tuning in.